Issue that you raised, primarily concerned with the change-
Well, it's happening now, because the mic's nearby, we are, and they are online.
Let's just discuss it in the meeting. All right, so I'd like to open the meeting, stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I wanted to move one thing to the consent agenda, item number 10. We've done this several times now, this is the reimbursement for individuals regarding the DEC consent order, this is for the individual at Ten Grove Street, everyone okay with that?
Yes.
I also wanted to remove item four. I need to circulate the language for that resolution, I haven't done that yet, so I just want to table that until next time.
They're right over there on the table.
And I think that was it.
And then I have-
You had some additions?
I do, it's paperwork that has been put here in your mail boxes.
Right.
The resolution that was provided by Mark Blower for the sidewalk grant. There's a request for training for Holly, and a request for training for Brian Horns. There's a letter from Episcopal Church regarding a funeral that will be placed on Saturday, I checked with Lou, and he's all right with it. And also, there's an amendment to the resolution for bills and claims, it's marked as amended, and that was a part of the-
Thank you, Tom, I think you may have grabbed my pile of papers.
Did you? Is this yours?
So, let's go through those one at a time and just add those to the agenda. So we have the resolution for sidewalk grant that we received from grant writer Mark Blower. So that's just like a roll call type of thing?
Yes.
Let's do that first, so you can add that as the first thing. What else?
There's a request for training made by Holly.
Right, and you included the dollar amounts for that training, I think it was a three-day training, and the cost, you sent the email to me earlier today?
Yes, actually I sent it to everyone, it's $225.
Is that coming up in December?
It's not, I think it's-
December 2nd through 4th.
December 2nd, okay, right. Would you guys be, do you want to- Has everyone looked at that, or would you prefer that we just look at it at a future meeting so we have a chance to digest it better? Because it's really no rush to do it tonight.
If you know, we're just about fifteen minutes-
Oh, that's right.
I don't think it's controversial.
It's not controversial?
I don't think this is controversial.
Let's add it to the consent agenda.
I think Glenn wants some training too, could I say?
Yes.
So Holly's was for- I know, but the topic. Yeah, it was definitely something that a code enforcement person-
Ninth annual-
We can cover it for code classes. It's all emails, there's nothing on the actual flyer on the event, I should say what to do.
Okay, I'm fine with that on the consent agenda, and then, oh, right, and then Bryant's had to do with photovoltaic.
Yes.
Correct, so it was training regarding photovoltaic, I'm good with adding the training for both Holly and Bryant onto our consent agenda, as long as everyone else is.
Yeah, sure.
All right, what else do we have, Katie?
We have a request from upper members of the Episcopal Church, they lost a beloved priest recently, they're going to be having a funeral on Saturday, and they would like to suspend some of the current regulations on the neighboring streets, they did circulate it. I did speak to Lou, who said it's very much like what we do for Sunday Falls, it's only for three hours.
Right, and that's on South Oakwood, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah. I'm fine with that on the consent agenda as well. Does everyone else?
Yeah.
And I received after hours this afternoon, but because Brian took arms, felt so strongly about it, I circulated by email a quote from Dell, their desktop, Christina in the building department.
Yes.
Six hundred twenty-five dollars, the treasurer was all right with it, and we didn't get additional quotes because it's compatible with the system that we have, so it's almost exclusively, if you'd like, we could talk about it on the 10th, if we can talk about it.
I would rather get Christina the equipment she needs, so she can be an effective secretary to our planning and zoning boards, I think it's very important. You guys okay with that?
Consent agenda?
Yeah.
And I just want to bring to your attention, in fact, with the resolution for the bills and claims, there's an amended one that's been circulated, it's the same, it's just a few numbers are different.
Okay. And that's, that's good, that's everything that you had listed?
Yes.
Okay, good. Announcements, I wanted to update everyone on fire hydrant stuff, again, and I'm also noting, this is our fourth meeting in four Wednesdays in a row, and then we have a joint meeting on this upcoming Tuesday.
So I'm glad I'm not the only person who's noticed that.
So everyone's earning their paychecks.
And then you have another meeting after that, but I'll-
Right, so we'll have six meetings in a row. So, we've been discussing hydrants pretty regularly, and I have more positive news. The hydrant at Henry W. and Prospect, which was considered one of the more complicated hydrants in terms of a repair that was needed, because it involved excavating below the road, that was dealt with today, and Blue sent me a picture of the hydrant with water coming out of it, so that hydrant is back online. And the other hydrant that has been in need of repair is the one located here at the bottom of Lookout at Plattekill, and that hydrant has now been fixed, we had been waiting on parts for it to be repaired, and it will be officially online coming Monday. So that leaves us with one remaining hydrant out of the plus 140 hydrants in the total system offline, and that is the hydrant located on Route 32 across from where the fire took place two weeks ago, near family of Newpalt, and we have parts on order with the vendor, so those parts should be here shortly, and that hydrant will be online. I also met with our engineering firm, Bernier and Larios, about this concept of getting a bid to see what would be involved, and the cost to replace the eight hydrants that we have within our system that do not have the five-inch valves, so we have- The vast majority of hydrants in our system have a five-inch valve, and then three-inch valves on the side, but there are eight hydrants that do not have the five-inch valves, so we're legally fine, because our fire department is trained and has the adapters to use those valves, but I think, based on discussions we've had several times with our board, that we would all be more comfortable if our fire department did not have to hassle with adapters, and just was able to use the hoses that they had at the ready to attach to hydrants with five-inch valves. So, we're going to find out how much that will cost to replace those eight hydrants. It's actually seven new hydrants that we would end up with, because one of these eight is near another new hydrant that had been replaced not too long ago, so that hydrant will, that hydrant that does not have the five-inch valve will just be eliminated. So we're talking about getting a bid for seven new hydrants, so hopefully, we will have bid information on that by the end of next week, that's what the engineer from Bernier and Larios explained to me this week.
May I ask, Mr. Mayor, given the very positive information that you've conveyed, and I really appreciate this a lot, will the charges for all of these repairs be able to be covered within this budget, year's budget? Or do we have to use contingency fees, or can we get additional support from any other source?
Are you talking about the repairs that we've been working on recently, or this-
Those that are recently done, and those that are projected, including the replacement altogether of the seven new-
Yeah, I haven't gotten an official word as to, the rough estimates right now were about forty-eight thousand dollars for the eight, or would be seven new hydrants, so that's the initial rough estimate. We'll get better numbers next week, and where we take that money from, I will also get an answer to your question.
Okay.
But, tell, I mean, the vibe that I've gotten from our board is that we're interested in being pretty proactive to try to sort this problem out, and do it from our existing funds, any existing contingency or emergency funds that we have, as opposed to waiting and adding it to the forthcoming budget.
I just want to thank the mayor for being so proactive, and for putting so much attention to this issue. I saw the DPW working on Prospect and Henry W., passed them twice today, and at 4:15, they were in front of my house sucking up leaves, so, yeah, they're really, really making us proud.
Yeah, and I attended the fire department's meeting on Monday night to try to relay to them how we're, you know, taking a close look, and really trying to be proactive, and update these hydrants that should be repaired or replaced. And there had also been some discussion about why there was a failure during the fire with that hydrant, and I wanted to relay to them, it seemed like there was some confusion about the idea that in a fire-type situation, you could open a hydrant all the way, which somehow could create a problem for that hydrant, if it's an older hydrant that's not used to being opened all the way, because during the twice-a-year flushings, they're just basically checking to make sure that they're working generally, but probably not at the level that you would expect a hydrant to perform during an emergency-like fire situation. And the fire department was explaining to me how, you know, they are very carefully trained in terms of using hydrants, and being careful when they're being opened even in rushed emergency-type situations. So, I feel like we're in very good hands with our fire department, and, you know, sometimes just these hydrants become older, and it is absolutely no one's fault if there's a failure, it's not operator error, it's just because this is aged equipment that needs to be updated. So in addition to the seven hydrants that we're considering repairing in the very near term, I had also asked Blue to give us a sense of any of the other older hydrants that we have in our system, in our plus 140 fire hydrant system, because it may be prudent to take a few of those older hydrants, even if they have the five-inch line, and remove them, so we're not stuck in a situation where our fire department is forced to deal with infrastructure that is beyond its useful life. So that is my fire hydrant update, and this is a hot topic, I got the Oracle coming tomorrow, because they want to talk about this, and, you know, it's, I think it really came out of the fire that occurred on Mulberry Street, that made us all very aware of aged-out infrastructure, so sometimes bad situations result in good outcomes, and I think we're going to sort this out and end up with a higher-quality series of hydrants. All right, no other announcements, anybody else want to share something? Public comment? No? So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I think the first item on our business agenda was the resolution regarding the sidewalk grant, you needed a show of hands regarding-
I do need your vocal, I just need you to accept the resolution, adopt the resolution.
So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution, the information that was provided regarding the sidewalk grant money that we're receiving for a few sidewalks within our village that are in desperate need of repair?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, resolution to approve bills and claims.
That's on vocal.
Okay.
So I'm in a motion to accept.
So, Lou?
Second.
Mayor Rogers?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rogers is absent, Mr. Rocker?
Aye.
Mr. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
So it's four ayes, zero noes, zero abstains, one absent, Deputy Mayor Rogers, voting aye.
Okay. Next topic, we've discussed this a few times now, just this concept of the type of agreement that we are looking to have with our colleagues on the town board when we are pursuing this joint municipal center with the town and the village. Anybody want to comment on the discussion we had last week? We had Don make some comments via video, I think we did our best to listen, the audio wasn't as clear, I believe Dennis wanted to give Don a chance to speak a little bit further on some of his thoughts.
Firstly, I appreciate the mayor allowing me to address the board and the public in that matter. I really appreciate you going the extra mile, and I also appreciate the fact that the topic was held open to this week, and it's a very important topic, and certainly one that I feel we need to make the very best decision for the very best reasons. I'd like to make a positive and proactive resolution to start off. When I watch, I watched the village board meeting this past weekend, and I also watched the town board meeting, and there's still language being used that if the village decides to partner with us on this project, and I wince every time I hear that, because I think we already made that decision, and voted in a joint meeting with the town, but people still seem unconvinced or have doubts about that, so even though I think it's superfluous, I'd like to move that the village of Newpalt commits again to working jointly with the town to construct and occupy a joint government center. I don't know whether it's necessary to vote twice, but if people are still doubting that, I don't see any harm in it, I want to throw that out there.
I second that, and I appreciate, I think it's sometimes very palpable to repeat ourselves, so I-
I was going to echo, just in sentiment, that we all believe that we've done something, and that something is agreed, to support the construction and occupancy of a single home for the village and town. How we do that subsequently is, well, not subsequently, how we do that is another issue, but that we're going to do that, we've agreed.
That ship has sailed, so, you know.
Yeah, and I think, I think, Don, you actually made that clear in your comment from last week.
I think so too.
That was kind of how you opened your comment.
I believe you said that ship has sailed.
I did say that, and I, and the ship has sailed, and I wish, I wish, you know, everyone would hear that, and reflect that. So I don't know if you want to vote on that resolution, or just-
Well, I'm willing to vote on it as a confirming resolution, yeah.
I think I seconded it tonight.
You did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the next part is, Tom indicated, is how things are going to proceed. I'd like to, I think this village, and I'll use an example of another issue, might have missed an opportunity to do best by the people in the village. You know, the town and the village are both Newpalt's, but the budgets are separate, and the money is separate in a lot of cases. We have an item on the agenda tonight, where we're going to be approving between piping and pumping and filtration equipment, 1.9 million dollars or so on pumps and pipes, and I, it pains me to have to look to our taxpayers for that amount of money, because I had argued, and I still believe, if we had pushed, and asked, and demanded, we could have conceivably had some relief on some of those costs from New York City and the DEP. Didn't shake out that way, I don't have the conversation again, but it pains me that, you know, that the pipe from Mountain Rest Road water treatment plant and the pump station that we're looking to spend over almost 2 million dollars to pay for is something that conceivably, we could have had some relief on, so.
But, I'm just not sure which, you said 1.9, which part of the project are you talking about?
It's 1.7 million dollars for piping and a pump station.
Oh, so, okay.
And also 200,000 dollars for the water treatment plant itself.
Can I, do you want me to, do you want me to comment on exactly what water line that is? Because we have two water lines, we have, and I think, I understand the point you're making, but I don't mind trying to clarify, and kind of give you an update on that topic specifically, which I've been working on this week. So we currently have a water line that goes down Mountain Rest Road, and cuts across the flats, and then goes across the Walkill River Bridge, the Carmine Liberta Bridge. And then we also have a line that's about 100 years old, that runs through the woods to the north of Mountain Rest Road, and actually serves a handful of municipal water users who are in the town. And that is the line that I believe you're talking about, and I think what you're talking about is if we had just negotiated a different deal with the DEP, would they have considered doing work to update that line, which has a great deal of problems and has failed? Curiously, it still has enough water trickling through it that it can serve the handful of town residents that use municipal water, but it's not a reasonable backup, it's not a reasonable redundant backup, whereas if the Mountain Rest Road line went offline, we would have no way to get water down to the village. And, so one of the things that I'm trying to do is actually to continue to talk to the DEP about that line, and to see if they would consider helping us with the costs that we're facing. So that's an ongoing, that's an ongoing discussion.
I don't want to divert us from the topic at hand either.
Yeah, just to give you an example.
But I'm hoping, what I'm hoping is that that ship has not sailed quite yet. It might, it might sail, it might sail very quickly, but I believe that, we're hoping that it hasn't sailed yet.
Well, I would join you in that hope, but the paperwork that we have about the vote tonight, you know, does talk about a lot of some money.
Yeah.
You know, the town got a lot from the DEP. You know, it seemed like the DEP was very happy to provide, I got quite a bit of infrastructure and hardware. And, you know, we're also looking tonight at an IMA, where we're going to be paying the repairs on the equipment that the town got for free from the DEP, and I just, you know, I just feel, in some way, shape, and form, I just, I think, you know, this board was not in place, you know, I'm not pointing fingers or anything along those lines, it just, it pains me that we're having to spend this money when we maybe could have gotten some help from it.
But we're not spending money, we're only committing to do repairs and spend money if there's a failure. Right, I just want to clarify that. We're not spending, we're not spending any money by, you're commenting on, are you referring to item number three, right? The intermunicipal agreement between the village and the town?
Yes.
That's the second item, the repairs, yes, yes.
Yeah, but we're not committing to spending any money.
I'm not, I'm not, we-
There are no encumbrances, is what you're talking about, there are no encumbrances, and there is no commitment to funds in the current or predictable, future-
And we were advised by Dave Merzick, our water and sewer attorney, he was pretty comfortable with that risk, because what we're talking about is a willingness to repair new infrastructure for the length of the IMA. So he was, he was pretty comfortable saying that the village risk of being faced with those repairs is something, a risk that he was willing to take, based on, this is new infrastructure.
I lost the meeting, and there's actually a quote here, according to Deputy Supervisor Jeff Logan, "While the equipment will be all new, any failure could result in a shocking large bill." That's what's, I understand it's new equipment, I'm, I haven't even gotten to the main point I was making, it's just a big example.
Yes, that's what I think we should, I think we should get-
Hold on, Katie wanted to comment on something.
I'm terribly sorry to disturb you, but I've been alerted that the best mic in the room currently is the one we are using, and perhaps you might want to share your mic.
The one that I'm using, what if, what if we all just make sure we're-
We cluster.
Or the mics are as close as possible?
I have just-
Don, do you want to make sure you're just speaking as close to the mic as possible?
Sure.
Oh, that, that seems like it's better.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. And I, there are a lot of examples in the recent history of the town of acting first, researching later, going back to the salvation. I went back, as was suggested at a recent meeting, to the town site, and I reviewed the report from the mold experts, and it states very clearly in black and white that they decided against further testing that might condemn the building, and allow us to get more grants and more aid, because the decision had already been made to demolish the building. And it's right there in black and white, we're not going to do any further testing, because you've already decided to demolish the building. So it is, that's still a T needing to be crossed, and I needing to be dotted. And when I look at this question we have before us, in renting versus owning versus leasing, you know, I have to be asking myself, what else has been missed? And what we don't have in front of us is numbers. Whether to rent or to own is not a conceptual question, it's not a concept, it's a financial position. And anyone in the world who's going to be renting or owning a car, or deciding whether to rent or own a home, will sit down around the table with a calculator and crunch the numbers. And we're being asked to make a major financial commitment without any numbers, which is, which does not strike me as good government. I got a call back this morning from the mayor of Adams, New York, the village of Adams and the town of Adams, New York, constructed a joint government center a couple of years ago. And one of the things I asked him was whether a rental arrangement would be cleaner, and more easy to move forward on. And they actually, that is actually the first path they took, they had decided that one would rent from the other. But, and he was there at that time, and he said he found the lease negotiations were so complicated, and involved so many details and so many items, it became very contentious, and as a result, they decided, after that experience of trying to rent or lease, to build jointly with a 50-50 bonding, and they had a joint checking account for utilities, and they split everything else down the middle. So from his perspective and experience, renting or leasing, in his words, was way too complicated. Closer to home, I wrote down word for word what Dave Lent, the former town supervisor, said last week at the town council, backed up the tape and wrote it down. "Once the village decides," and I'm quoting him, "once the village decides that they want to be a part of this, it's going to take a significant period of time to deal with the details of what the arrangement is going to be, to look forward for 30, or 40, or 50 years between the town and the village, so that they are not continuously at each other's rooks. What are the responsibilities? How do you define what a lease rate? What does it cost?" Yet, the town board, which is now a lame duck town board, would have us sweep all that under the rug, and is asking us to vote to rent without any understanding of the financial picture or financial implications. We're not able to crunch the numbers. You know, if you want to buy a car versus leasing a car, you've got to crunch the numbers, we don't have the numbers, we haven't been given that information. So I would like to, I'd like to, in some way, shape, and form, avoid a situation where the lame duck town board has locked everything in before the new team even gets a chance to speak to the issue. And I'd like to ask, and I guess I'll make this a resolution, that Neil Battis be appointed to the executive committee to join Marty Irwin, and Dan Torres, and Tim Rogers and I, and that the executive committee provide the village and the town with the following information by, you can fill in the date. Those three pieces of information are the approximate values- Those three pieces of information are the approximate value of the twenty-five Platicill Avenue property. There was discussion last week about we can't borrow money and we can't risk our credit rating to go into an ownership situation on the new municipal building, but that ignored the fact that we're the prediction that we would be selling this property and be deriving income from selling this property. So we wouldn't be going into debt and ruining our credit rating. That, I, I found that argument to be not very strong. So I'd like to know the value of this property on twenty-five Platicill Avenue. I'd like to know the approximate value of the three Veterans Drive property and the approximate cost of a joint government center. And once we have that information as a village and as a town, we can figure out how to move forward financially. It is not a conceptual decision, it's a financial decision. And I would like, it's not part of the motion, but I'd like the executive committee to meet at least twice each month. We have a process we set up where the executive committee would, would deal with major questions and report out to the boards, and that process has not been followed. The question of rent versus own did not emerge from the executive committee. It didn't emerge from the building committee.
I disagree with you.
With the rent or own?
It was, it was absolutely discussed several times amongst members of the executive committee, but that, that's not really important. One question I have for you is so.
It was discussed at a meeting that we, we held.
Sure. We, we absolutely discussed that as a group.
Well, at the last meeting we had outside of the picnic table before our last board meeting.
Yeah.
The discussion was among the members, how did this topic of rent or own come up? And all four of us were there, and nobody said it came from our.
I think I've spoken about it with Marty Erwin like every other day for the last month. But getting back to what you were bringing up, do, do you want to go ahead and get an appraisal for, for twenty-five Platicill and Veterans Drive, two different appraisals?
Um, I think, let's find out what the cost implications are, whether we get.
I mean, appraisals would probably cost about five thousand bucks apiece? So that's generally how much it would cost.
Well, what the language was, the approximate value. So if an appraisal is prohibitively expensive.
We, you know what I, you know what I think we could also do is we can just talk to some commercial real estate brokers.
Yeah.
And, and they'll probably get pretty close, so.
Yeah, I agree.
So why don't we, as an exec committee, try to identify some commercial real estate brokers who we know and trust and we can speak to in confidence?
I, I think that'd be great.
Okay, so let's, let's put that on our exec committee agenda.
And we should probably set a date, because right now there's no date set for the executive committee meeting.
I'm a little, um, I love the idea of, of adding Neil to that committee, but then we are going to have an issue with having three town board members.
Not yet.
Oh, that's true.
And the village board, I don't object, and I don't object.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's, that seems, that seems like a very useful, you know, that's a, that's a good use of our time.
So that's my motion, that Neil be appointed to the executive committee, of course, assuming the town would agree to that, Neil would agree to that.
So we can, we can talk about that on Tuesday.
That's a tweet.
Katie, you want to put a note? Because we're, we're building the agenda for Tuesday's joint meeting.
And lastly, on this topic, you know, I, I reached out to a number of, I heard at the town board meeting, the new town has spoken to the bond council, so I didn't feel we could do that. I did speak with a number of financial people that, that I trust. And I guess I, the comment that, that rhymed loudest with me was the comparison of a municipality that now owns land and owns, owns a building to move to being a tenant or a lessor. It was compared to a reverse mortgage where the current generation derives financial benefit but leaves nothing for the generations to come. And it's not an exact comparison, but I, I feel like if we walk into office and we own land and we own building and we walk out of office and we don't have that, 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 those assets, I feel like we're, we're not doing right by the, the boards and the taxpayers that follow us.
Well, I, I mentioned this last time, and thi- this has echoed by a conversation that I had with our village attorney, Will Frank. Like municipalities are not in the business to own assets. We're not in the business of trying to make money via capital gains where assets appreciate. So, you know, thinking that we're going to buy stuff and, and hope that it appreciates is, is not the business of government.
No, it wasn't that we would appreciate, just that we have it. We have a home that, we own it. We own a home. We would be in a situation where we wouldn't own a home. And I, I just, it's not appreciation, it's, do you have a, do you have a home?
But as our attorney, our treasurer, our bond counsel, you have all the same rights in a long-term lease. It, it's essentially the same thing as owning a home. You, if you have a lease agreement with terms that are, that are discussed and agreed upon, you essentially have the same rights as you would if you owned the property. There is no difference that, and it was, as it was explained to me, this is no different than any other plain vanilla commercial real estate transaction.
Well, I, I'm, what I think I hear you saying is that there's no difference in having assets and not having assets.
No, because the function of government is just we need a place to go and have offices. We're, we're, we're not in the business of, of owning stuff hoping that it's going to appreciate and that we could sell it at some point in the future. That, that, that's, the, the idea of constructing a municipal center at Veterans Drive is to own that property for a hundred years. We are never going to sell it for, you know, we're not speculating on real estate here. That is not what we're doing. That's not the business of government.
But I never said a word about appreciation and selling.
But you're talking about the value of owning an, an asset.
Of having a home, yes.
Right, and you have the security of a home.
But not the home.
Via a long-term lease. This is what has been, this is what has, this is what I'm familiar with, having been involved in, in multimillion dollar financial tracks, transactions, and this is exactly the same advice that we've gotten from the council who I've spoken to, our treasurer who we all trust and, 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 you know, have great comfort in, in her advice. It, we don't need to, we don't need to make a decision on renting versus owning tonight. We're just going to continue to collect information, we're going to continue to talk to its bound council about what's most prudent. All I want to do is do what is most prudent and, and most cost effective for New Paltz, both the town and the village. That's it.
Could I ask a, a question about funds that we would realize from the sale of this property that I have to agree with Don would exceed funds we would need to go into a lease agreement? Would those funds then be available for contingency funds that go into the long term and/or the reduction of our loan package now?
Well, I guess two things, right? We also, we already do have an estimate for the cost of this municipal building. It's about ten million dollars.
Okay.
So, and we also already have estimates for how many square feet we would be using in this municipal building. It's about twenty-five percent. So you're talking about two and a half million dollars worth of, of borrowing that we would be on the hook for and we would be paying for via monthly lease payments.
Yes.
Um, so I think the question you're asking is, is the value of this property more or less than two and a half million dollars?
Well, no, I'm, I'm assuming it's substantially more, and so you're saying about ten.
Really? Substantially more.
No, I mean, the, the whole property. No, you think not?
I have no idea, but I wouldn't say that I, I'm, that, that I would get comfortable with the idea that this is substantially more than two and a half million dollars. I thi- I, I think Don suggested enough exploring that, I mean, it's valuable information to have, just like all information is valuable to have, and we can probably figure it out by talking to some commercial real estate brokers, but, well, is it worth more than two and a half million dollars?
And where I'm going and my, my goal, I guess my ideal would be a situation where we jointly owned the land and jointly owned the building, and that'd be Veterans Drive. And I think that, I'd like to know if that could be achieved via the sale of, of this, this parcel.
Okay, and, and what's been explained to me by every single professional that I've spoken with is there is no advantage to owning the property, getting involved in, working on a deal where we would have to own the property at Veterans Drive. All there is is just cost. There is just cost to changing the deed and paying lawyers for that transaction, and we've accomplished nothing.
Well, we would be on an equal footing with the opinions.
No, we wouldn't. We wouldn't. We would still be on an equal footing with an agreement. It doesn't matter whether it's a co-ownership agreement or a lease agreement. An agreement is an agreement.
I think our positions are clear. Let's, I'm comfortable moving on.
Okay, so next topic, or does anyone else want to comment on?
There was a motion on the table about the, about adding Neil and, and, and that information, do we vote on that? Do we have a second? My motion to add Neil to the, you mentioned you'd gone through on it.
Yeah.
Tim, so maybe you, here.
I thought you, we had not voted on it till now, it's.
Just to add Neil to the exec committee through, through the end of the year? I think that's a great idea. Second.
Are you in agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the original movement was also to get those.
Get those three bits of information.
To what?
We're all in agreement on that? I don't need to vote on it.
To get the additional financial information that Don's requesting.
Which financial information?
The three bits of information were the value of this property, the value of Three Veterans Drive and the, and the cost of building the building, which I think the architects have already.
Yeah, we already know that the rough estimate is ten million dollars, and I believe Marty Erwin has worked with Joe Horowitz, who's been selected as the architect, and they actually agreed on terms of a contract between the town and Mr. Horowitz today. So that is moving forward, and, and I imagine that will allow, you know, a tightening of that ten million dollar estimate. And I think we agreed, I don't know if it even requires a resolution or an agreement, there's that our exec committee is going to be tasked with talking with commercial real estate brokers who we trust to get estimates for these two properties.
I don't think that requires a motion.
I don't think it does either.
But my, my.
I think it's just a, a good idea.
Quick calculation tells me that the two and a half million dollars at four hundred dollars a square foot would amount to six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet.
I think they're using, go ahead. I think that they're using three hundred dollars a square foot.
Well, then, do we now use six thousand two hundred?
And, and again, part of this process is when we hire an architect, they're going to do programming. You know, we use a bunch of completely inefficient space in this building.
Without question.
This is the, 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 the most poorly designed use of space that I think anyone could imagine for office use. But the architect is going to come in and, and interview the, the staff and figure out what you use and what you don't use and, and eyeball what we should be building new. So we have a, you know, a better use of staff, just improved functionality.
So I, this is the first time we've been able to announce to the public or the board some of these numbers, which I think is a really good thing. I'd like, I'd appreciate if, if someone would just put it on a piece of paper for our next topic, so it's all somewhere, just those three items that we, or the information we know, the ten million dollars, the two point five million dollars, just write it down somewhere so we can refer to it in the future.
Well, the two and a half is just a back-of-the-envelope estimate. I don't think it's, you know, I, I don't think anyone should hang their hat on it.
My calculator estimate. And I'm coming up with, again, using six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, which is twenty-five percent of twenty-five thousand square feet approximately, and I'm coming up with one million eight seventy-five.
Any doubt? Thanks. Okay, well, I think as, as we know numbers, we have the confidence in them. I think it's good that we, we put them out there. I don't want to rush you into it. Just happy you talked about numbers.
Okay.
So are you abandoning the motion, or is there a second to the motion for vote?
I think we have arrived at consensus and feel that there is no vote needed.
Okay, so we're sending the motion?
Yes.
Okay, just so I can.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so the, the fifth item is this town-village master plan. We're going to add this to the agenda for November tenth when we meet with the town. We commented on this at one of our last meetings, just the, the concept of, of how this will work, where we'll have a joint town and village committee with folks, a cross-section of folks with different backgrounds and expertise who we've, we've identified and who've expressed interest in, in working on this comprehensive master plan. So we have a resolution that the previous village and town boards agreed to. All we need to do, in my eyes, and we can run this by our attorney and the town should probably run it by their attorney, is just change the date, because the date of that resolution said the comprehensive master plan needed to be completed by the end of two thousand fourteen. And now we're, so I imagine we need to change that to the end of two thousand sixteen.
Number three.
What's that?
We jumped over number three.
Oh, I'm sorry. So can, are we, we're fine with number five?
Yeah.
So we're going to go back to item number three. I'd like to take a straw poll. Are we all okay with moving this maintenance agreement forward? We began discussing it a little bit, but just the idea that the village would be responsible for infrastructure failures within the proposed water district number five on Plains Road and Woodland Drive?
Well, I'm more than okay with it. It's a step in a direction that I think we need to take in order to effect the formation of a water district in that area, and we need to have that under our belts in order to complete this project.
I think it's also important to note that this maintenance agreement is really the result of the Plains Road folks who are concerned about what-ifs. And, and I have to credit them for, for being very mindful of, of these types of what-ifs. I think it's very unlikely that there's going to be an infrastructure failure in, in the near or intermediate term, or hopefully even the long term, but the very long term, I'm sure we can anticipate a, a maintenance failure because we're dealing with that now, where our water mains are, are failing because they're approximately a hundred years old. But this is a, a what-if, a worst-case scenario protection document for those approximately eighty-six residents of Plains Road, or eighty-six properties on Plains Road, if there ends up being a water district there.
I see this as a reasonable insurance step, a risk management, if you will, that has the lowest chance of being realized.
This, this resolution passed the town board with one dissenting vote, and I think I will give a dissenting vote on the village board.
Okay. Dennis, what, what are your thoughts?
I'm comfortable with this. I would always prefer someone else take financial responsibility for anything, but sometimes you need to belly up to the bar and take responsibility. I'm okay with it.
I then moved that we pass this amendment as delivered to us and as reviewed.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Don, Don's a no.
Who's?
So three to one? All right, this has, this is the second time this is on our agenda, so I'm waiting for a draft resolution from the folks who are working with the.
Tom, you were at that meeting.
Yes, I was. I thought that I'm going to deliver by the end.
Yeah, so.
Of that week, or perhaps the first day.
And I've actually spoken with Supervisor Zimmet, because I think, like me, she was also wondering if we misunderstood something or an email slipped through the cracks, but I, I sent another note today looking for this draft resolution. I, I don't think it's a particular, you know, this is not like a, an urgent situation, but it, it just helps with moving the ball forward regarding using this New York State agency, DASNY, as the sub-recipient regarding this potential New York Rising project where we would be spending north of a million dollars to harden the sewage treatment plant down on Huguenot Street and also hopefully deal with some inflow and infiltration stormwater issues. So that's.
I would like very much, I, I was quite encouraged by that meeting. Was quite impressed with the presentation made by the DASNY people and the collaborative attitude and efforts of the people responsible for New York Rising. So I had, I hoped at that time that we would move this quickly, and I hope now again that they will move quicker, because we're just waiting on that. and I hope now, again, that they will move quicker, because we're just waiting on that. Uh, we had very happy meetings with New York Rising quite a long time ago, and it looked like we were going to move these projects forward.
Well, we have two projects, we have two projects that are moving forward, and, and I think we're in very good hands with the project manager.
Hello, I like the project manager.
Lori de Board, she does a great job.
Very, very.
She actually shared a statistic with me that, um, you know, of the X number of project managers in New York State handling New York Rising projects, like, let's say there are 20 projects that have been realized, she's done, like, the vast majority of them. So I think we're, we're in with a, a really good proactive project manager. And so there are two projects. One, they've already green-lighted the money for, um, it's actually, uh, two pots of money. One, uh, where the county will receive $400,000 towards the Carmine Le Berde Bridge across the Walk Hill, and then we're getting approximately $90,000 for the water line replacement. And then there's another project related to the, um, bridge that crosses the Walk Hill further north, where the rail trail is, and then there's going to be a widening of that area and, um, and an enhancement to that bridge, so it can be used for emergency access. So if there was, you know, flooding, and it seems reasonable to expect that there will be flooding and issues where Springtown is, is cut off, um, there will be some, there will be a second point to get across the, the Walk Hill if needed. So those are the, the three projects.
I'm very happy with those.
So the next one that Lori has been, um, showing a great deal of optimism about, you know, its ability to move forward, is this hardening of our sewage treatment plant. So that's what that's about. So we're just going to punt and, and hopefully get that draft resolution and put it on our agenda on the 10th, because we could do that with the town, because they need to sign the same resolution. So the next item is a proposed amendment to sections 21223, the site plan review. I'd ask Tom to kind of give us a macro view of what this means.
You may all, uh.
Maybe pull the, pull the mic closer in case.
I don't know that this mic is on at all.
No?
Doesn't sound.
Don has one.
Hello. Um, you may all recall that the issue of site plan review came up several times. The planning board, uh, had, uh, additional burdens put on it when the last board constituted of myself and others, uh, changed, uh, some of the laws about site plan review, and now included, uh, the necessity of reviewing all changes to one and two-family buildings along with all the other items that were in the, uh, in the required, uh, class of, uh, review. And when that was done, the planning board all of a sudden was getting inundated with, uh, what it had not had to consider before. We did want, uh, one and two-family houses to be included in some categories. The revised bill that is before us now, uh, separates one and two-family houses from new construction of one and two-family houses, from the construction of larger, uh, entities, and requires site plan review, but it does not require all the same, uh, items to be covered. So the planning board will mount the burden with, uh, the same amount of information that they would for a larger project. It also, uh, limits the number and kind of reviews that will be required if there is a substantial repair of property that is in excess of 50% of the square footage. So if there is a smaller repair that will not need to come before the planning board, but if there is a repair that exceeds 50% of the square footage of the existing property, that will need to come before. But it will not, again, have the same burden of information required for a larger project. So we're being asked to pass, uh, a law that amends the existing, uh, law that had been changed about a year ago in order to take, uh, account of certain requirements that the planning board felt, but wound up putting burdens on the planning board that were not only unfair but unnecessary.
I'm, I'm just a little confused. I thought we already did this. We already made this change to, um, only require projects that were involving a greater than 50% of the square footage to go before the planning board. So is this something different?
This is, I, I reviewed the, the piece before us rather than other pieces and the reason for it. I do not remember that we actually passed another piece of legislation that would have had to be submitted then to the state, right?
We had a public hearing for it, I thought.
Well, this may be the result of all of that. No?
I, I, I'm just, I'm just unclear as to what this is, and I wish we had a memo explaining what this is as opposed to just the proposed changes to the law, because I, I need.
Who sent this to us?
Well, this says it's from the village planner, but... So let's, let's just put this on, let's table this for the next meeting, because it's just unclear to me what we're doing here. Does anyone else have any questions?
I'm, I'm with you. I thought we already took care of those.
Yeah, okay. And, and maybe they, maybe they modified it and identified another correction that, that needed to be handled, but it's just not clear.
Yeah, we need to be clear on what we're going on. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll send Mr. DeLorean on the line.
Okay. Um, next topic, discussion of fire laws. So we received a, an email from a resident who had some questions about, um, open fires and excessive smoke. And our very diligent building inspector, Bryant Arms, took a close look at our existing rules regarding, um, what's permitted and what's not permitted regarding open fires. And we had some email correspondence primarily between Tom and Building Inspector Bryant Arms.
And I then referred him to the mayor, and the mayor referred him to me, so.
Well, I, I, I read, I read all the emails, and I, no, but I read.
A money gesture.
Okay. I, I, I have my opinion about what we're doing here.
Well, there are really two, uh, two points of that, of conclusion of Bryant's, uh, men, messages back and forth. One is that, uh, somebody should be trained in the, in the detection, uh, practices, and, uh, we should have somebody on board, even though we do not need to pass legislation that would, uh, either supplant or, or even compliment the legislation that already exists in state law that governs, uh, open pit fires. But we should have somebody on board who, who knows the law and is able to, uh, assist us, even if that assistance is only in appearing before a judge and making, you know, giving testimony. We would have professional knowledgeable testimony. And, two things, and, uh, he believes that the, uh, the fine that is in state law could be, uh, added to our, uh, list of fees and fines that we do on an annual basis when we have our reorg meeting, so that it would be clear that people would be, in fact, liable if they are burning, uh, or making open pit fires. So those are the only two recommendations he's making. He is not requesting, uh, or suggesting to us that we pass a new law.
You don't think so? I thought he was suggesting that we, that we add to our code a rule regarding how open fires or excessive smoke are handled, because I thought he was saying it, it's currently inadequate.
Um, I didn't copy all of the, uh, all of the back and forth between us, but he did say this, uh, "It would probably be good to have anyone who is enforcing the village's air pollution law attend smoke school." And then he goes on to, uh, suggest how and where that might be done for $225.
Yeah, and, and.
So he says, "Please consider sending some of those to that." And then he says, "The fine for violating chapter 86," this is not chapter 86 in our code, is currently not listed in the fee schedule, and he suggests that it be so. Those are the only two positive recommendations that I recall this making.
Yeah, and there was, uh, as I was showing the mayor, that it's probably not a good idea to transfer the burden of enforcement of the DEC's prohibition against open burning in village, villages onto our employees by mirroring the DEC's prohibition into our local law. So he's saying it is not a good idea.
I think he's definitely saying that we need to enhance our local law, that we can, we can't simply rely on DEC regulations regarding open flames.
I'm not sure that you're right about that.
Then maybe we should follow up with him and get it straight from him rather than trying to interpret his email.
Well, this is the first time we're considering this, and we probably would have deferred any action on it anyhow. But the, I would suggest that there are two relatively simple steps that we could take. One is sending somebody to school, and another is, uh, including in the next reorg meeting when we set all the fees and fines that we include.
Right, but, but, but we.
A reference of the state chapter 86.
Okay, refer, right. So we could add that fine and then reference the state regulations regarding open flames or excessive smoke. But then, I agree with you, he was also suggesting that our code enforcement folks be trained in, at smoke school.
Yeah.
Which I thought was a.
An interesting, uh.
A cute phrase in, in quotes. They, they would attend smoke school so they could actually identify if the smoke was excessive enough, deserving of a fine. Because if they were then, before a, a judge, the judge could say, "Yes, this individual has been trained in identifying excessive smoke."
How often do we end up in front of a judge trying to make that case?
I don't know. And, and the other question I had is, like, is this an ongoing problem in our village, where we have?
Yes.
Open flames and excessive smoke that people are troubled by?
Behind my house, within.
That's your neighbor, right?
Within, uh, um, one, two, three, seven, within about 30 feet of my office, uh, we have frequently seen open pit fires, uh, with excessive smoke, and the police have been called in each instance. I have not called our building department. But the answer is yes. And I believe that if you go back there now, you might see the remnants of an open pit, even if there's no fire in it.
But again, and, and I, I imagine 99 times out of 100, any of these open flames are occurring when our building inspectors are not on duty. So anyone dealing with this is most likely going to be a police officer.
I, I can only tell you that sometimes on weekends, uh, people are grilling things in open pit fires very near the.
So what happens? How does the police deal with that? Say, the, the, you know, maybe this is also a question for Chief Snyder. What happens when they get a call about excessive smoke? You know, what can they or can't they do in terms of telling someone, "Your, your barbecue is too smoky"?
Well, they can cite, uh, statute 86, or paragraph 86 in the state law that says they know how to do this.
So how many of our officers have been to smoke school?
I, I don't know. I have no idea, of course.
I can follow up with the chief to see if, uh, how they would respond.
This is the second, this is like, uh, this is whenever we have a question for the chief, we assign it to Dennis. So yeah, ask, let's, let's do that. Let's ask the chief. Exactly that, how he handles these situations, before we go ahead and get involved in spending money on changing laws.
I'm with you. The building department's not here most of the time that someone's going to be burning a fire. The, you know, occasional pig roast notwithstanding.
Okay, so.
Well, I just hope that there are no fires near your home.
All right, so we have a, a plan of attack there. Dennis is going to circle back after he chats with Chief Snyder.
I was going to point out that if there is a big fire near Dennis's home, there's a brand-new fire, I hope you make sure to get out of, out of. That's not where, that's not where the microphone, that's okay.
Okay, so, next topic was this interesting concept of this print application that would be attached to our network server to monitor how much toner our various printers are using. Is this something that we, we want to, uh, provide to this salesperson so they can manage our printer usage? And they claim that we're going to end up saving money once they know exactly how much toner ink we use.
Is there a reason for us not to do this? If, if our clerical staff thinks that there's some value in it, is there a reason not to?
Did Deputy Clerk Alberta suggest that we do it, or was she just, uh, presenting it as an option that we could?
I think Alberta feels very positively about this, and in general, Alberta is known as the person who's the department hunter. Um, she really does seek out a good deal when possible, and she's, she feels favorably about this.
And, and I agree. That is Alberta's reputation. She, she tries to, um, do the best she can by the village when it, it comes to shopping for printer cartridges and anything else. So if Alberta's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
If there were a discussion about snowplow, I defer to the DPW. I defer to the personal services.
Uh, but particularly if it's related to printing. Alberta's our, our expert, our resident expert on printer cartridges. Okay, so let's, I, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, go ahead and, and let Alberta, um, have this, this outfit, add this software application or this application to our server. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a request from a resident at 202 Briarwood Court. They were looking for an extension, uh, in terms of paying their water sewer bill, um, through the end of the year.
Be given other people six months, so through the end of the year is.
That much of an extension?
It is really not. And it's a, an $873 bill currently that they're looking for an extension on, so I'm pretty comfortable with this.
Do you want to give the extension to January 31st?
Well, they asked for, they asked for the end of the year.
That's such a bad question.
So let's make a motion that we, uh, accede to their request.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and, another project, this is, so we regularly, I, I regularly meet with, um, our DPW superintendent and our village engineer, and we go over a list of, of infrastructure concerns, and how much they cost, and, and how important it is that we, we deal with them. And this is one that has regularly risen to the top of the list. Unfortunately, there is a grant that feels like it would work very well with this project. So it has to do with replacing the culvert that's underneath the rail trail, very close to Water Street Market, and the, the same culvert that is underneath the, the section of Water Street itself, um, right near, right near the, um, right near the rail trail. So this is a, a culvert that's failing, and, and it seems like the worst-case scenario is that the culvert could collapse and the, that section of the rail trail could collapse. So this is a grant application for $300,000. That's approximately how much this project would cost. And, um, you know, all we're doing here is just giving a heads-up to the board, looking for, um, an endorsement from our board. So I'd like to make a motion that we endorse this application. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was, that was it as far as the whole agenda. So I'd like to make a motion, we go into exec session.
Second.
Regarding personnel, and... Regarding personnel, and, that's it.
Please a second on Tom.
Do you need an autograph rather than waiting for us?
When you come back, we need to make a motion to offer a second here, so I'm just filling in the slide.
Okay. So, yeah, but I'll just.
Hang on.
So what'd you learn? If you didn't learn something.
Come back.
Good luck.
You can just run, run to the exit now.
Run.
Let's actually go into, uh, the plan of talk.
I'd like to make a motion that Tom is the secondary signer for this week's purchase orders.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Um, I'd also like to make a motion that we increase the hourly rate for Ryan Burney, um, to seventeen dollars an hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion.
Join.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.